All right, we gotta go, we're gonna go to work.
I'm busy.
Six o'clock, on the dot.
I thought you said dizzy.
Okay, let's call this meeting in order. Notice of an open work session of the City Council of the City of North Kansas City, Missouri, February 12th, 2018. Eric?
Thanks, sir. Tonight during this work session, we'd like to provide you a snapshot of our assessment of the condition of the city's infrastructure. Infrastructure, at least in our definition, is comprised of a number of different things, including streets, curbs, sidewalks, drainage, trees, water treatment, water distribution, sanitary sewer system, and our storm sewer system. And we've gone through and tried to talk about what we have and what kind of condition we think it's in, and things that might occur in the future that will affect that grade. So at this point, I'd like to go ahead and turn it over to our Public Works Director, Pat Haber.
Thank you, sir. The document itself is much, much larger and has a lot of information in it, but this PowerPoint's gonna just hit some of the, kinda go over it briefly. There we go. The purpose and intent of this document is to assess the condition and performance of various aspects of the city's infrastructure. Hopefully, it'll serve as a tool for planning and financing improvements. The report does not include the status of the park system, Link City Fiber Optics Network, or public buildings and facilities. The city owns and maintains an extensive infrastructure system, which includes transportation. We're going to be looking at the streets, drainage structures and trees, and grading them, water treatment and distribution, storm sewers and flood prevention, which includes drainage inlets, pipes, and stormwater pump stations, sanitary sewers, which includes manholes, pipes, pump stations, and sewage treatment. Transportation programs and projects are funded by the Transportation Fund and the North Kansas City Special Road District. Let's talk about the road district a little bit here. The city relies on the road district to perform asphalt overlays and other pavement improvements. The road district is funded from property tax and county revenue sources. Revenues have averaged $230,000 per year for the last five, five years. The current fund balance is approximately $1 million. In 2015, they received $730,000, $730,000 from a settlement between Clay County and the state of Missouri. The settlement, along with a healthy fund balance, allowed funding for special projects, including construction of the Clay Edwards Drive to the hospital, and reconstruction of Vernon Street Bridge. That was a very impressive project. Street extension of West 10th Avenue, realignment of the intersection of 32nd and Swift, extensive crack sealing program, which they started two years ago, and mill and overlaying asphalt streets, including Warren Street, which I believe is about a quarter mile long. Transportation fund, it's this year's budget, 2018 budget, is 2.33 million, funded primarily through a half-cent sales tax for transportation purposes. Other revenues into the fund come from gas tax, vehicle tax, I mean vehicle fees, motor vehicle sales tax, and annual road district distribution dispersments from the county. Transportation expenditures and responsibilities include maintenance and improvements to streets, sidewalks, curbs, gutters, traffic signs, street lights, both Kansas City power and light lease, and city-owned streetlights, bus service throughout the city provided by KC ATA, snow removal, leaf removal, street repairs, street sweeping, and pavement painting, street tree trimming, tree removals, and landscaping, and of course, emergency response. I want to say if there's any questions, just butt in and please ask, and I'll be glad to answer them. This, in 2007, Public Works staff developed a street conditions report, and it's an exhibit, it's attached to the actual document. Now, Public Works staff can utilize the systematic method of rating the condition of each street. We worked very closely with the road district for years and years, and each year, we both determine what is the priority streets that need to be overlaid, or repaired, or what the projects will be for the upcoming year. And it was just an informal process where our staff would go out and put down what they thought the priority was, and the road district as well would look at it, and we've pretty much agreed on most of them. And this year, we have a new, a new method, it's a street condition report document. Curbs, sidewalks, and drainage structures, continued funding is essential for maintenance of approximately 85 miles of curbs, 30 miles of sidewalks, and over 1,500 catch basins. Yes, sir?
I just got a question, real quick, on your sidewalk. I know they had a list, and they've gone down that list last year, and they didn't finish it. Are they gonna pick that back up in the spring?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I guess the weather caught them, something else caught them, I can't remember. We had some kinda problem that slowed that down. I can't remember what it was.
We made it through the priority sidewalks, any trippers, we're not aware of any trippers, but yeah, we didn't go through the entire sidewalk replacement program.
Well, they're still got a list, I just.
Yeah, we have a list.
All right, thank you.
Yep. Each year, the funding, annual funding for curb sidewalks and drainage structures have ranged from $250,000, which is this year, but for many years prior, it was $500,000. Our sidewalks and drainage structures are in good condition, and so we were able to reduce the annual funding for repairs. Street-owned trees, a lot of cities don't even have a tree program, but fortunately we do, and we have for many years. In 2017, the city celebrated 20th Year's Tree City USA, as designated by the National Arbor Society. The city continues with an aggressive tree program, and it's a challenge that we've faced for three years, the onset of the Emerald Ash Bore, and we've got a plan to minimize the destruction that it causes. The first thing that we did was in 2015, when we discovered it, we determined which ash trees were in good condition, and we were advised by experts to treat those with Triage, is the name of the chemical. And every three years, we are supposed to continue that for, not for 10 years. So this year, we're gonna be doing it this spring. Any trees that are infested or in fair to poor condition, we're removing. And we're averaging about 40 tree removals a year, ash tree removals that are affected by that disease or the onset of the Emerald Ash Bore. So the grade, grade card on transportation is street condition C+. And again, it goes back to the way we came up with that, is the new street conditions survey that we have, we went through, our staff went through every block of every street in town, two different persons went through, and our, we decided that, just to put a little, here's how it worked, we had our municipal services superintendent drive by independently and give his assessment of every block on every street. Chris Cooper of the office is very familiar with streets as well, he did it independently, and when they got together, they were almost identical on their assessment, so we feel it's a pretty good assessment. We were, hope to work with the road district, we did find, you know, there's a lot of streets that still need work, and we want to, looking forward to working with the road district to use this survey to report and determine the priorities, budgeting for future improvements, and perhaps maybe develop a five-year plan. But we feel pretty good about this condition report and the way we'll go about in the future prioritizing what streets the road district will be overlaying. Curbs, sidewalks, and drainage structures, gotta be, in the past decade, we, like I said, we've spent between $250,000 and $500,000 just on maintenance, and we're doing a good job of that, and as long as there's still funding available, that will remain in very good condition, that part of the infrastructure. City-owned trees, a B-, and again, North Kansas City's fortunate to have a city tree program, and before the onset of the Emerald Ash Bore, probably would be a B+, once we get through this in a matter of years, and replace all the trees that were taken down, and continue to have our beautiful tree canopies in the neighborhood throughout the city. Water treatment, our water system dates.
Can I just, and I know you said, you know, to have anybody break in, but maybe, why don't we just take a pause in between each of the categories?
Okay.
Just ask if you have any questions about that before we proceed on.
I got maybe to the road district more than anything, whatever they did to the streets this year, what'd they call that?
Microseal.
Yeah, it didn't work 100%. I mean, it's okay on micro, except at the end of the block, there's like a chunk just gone, I don't know where it went or anything, and there's several, walking around, I noticed there's several places that didn't stick, I guess.
They, they are supposed to come back and fix those areas. One other thing that they did is they were supposed to have a screen thing that would take out the big rocks, and their machine broke down.
Several times.
Several times, yeah. And so they, they went ahead, and that's where you notice some gouges in it, and this year, we have told them that that will be screened before it goes down, or we're not, so next year, we ought to have a little better-looking deal, but I really believe that it's working out pretty well, don't you think?
Yeah, sure do.
It's the best, best and cheapest alternative to just road a melon over.
And the extensive crack sealing program has brought the grade up. The extensive crack sealing program, the Levy District, or the road district gets done for the last two years, has brought the grade up somewhat. Water treatment.
I think that's one of the things, though, we got the biggest complaints about, the ceiling, not the overlay.
Yeah, yeah.
The ceiling didn't, didn't harden enough, and like motorcycles and bicycles had trouble when they turned their corners.
That, that was the crack ceiling.
Yeah, right.
And that wasn't, that wasn't done properly.
Okay.
We, hopefully, we've got that fixed, too.
All right.
Water treatment, our water system, as you probably know, dates back to 1912, that's when the city was incorporated, with most of the original treatment plant structures and 1.8 million gallon reserves still being used. By 2010, wells number one and number six were abandoned due to high levels of ammonia. The quality of drinking water still remains high, but emerging contaminants require the city to be vigilant in its efforts to update and improve our water treatment processes, and that's just what we're doing. In 2016, Burns &amp; McDonnell conducted a water study, they called for approximately 14 million in improvements and renovations. In late 2017, the city council approved a fund renovations through Gaming Fund and contracted with Burns &amp; Mack for engineering. The 2007 Water Master Plan was something, it's the guidelines that we still have used and will continue using, it was comprehensive, it recommended over $3 million in future water line replacements to increase volume in areas throughout the city if needed. The most important one, and priority A, was Harris Loop. And in 2007, the city thought that we might need to build another water tower to, down in the PID, so that we could have enough fire flow to fight any fires at Harris Hotels, which are new, and also, we had problems with water in the PID. This study told us, we don't need a water tower, we need to loop our system, so we did our first improvement from that, and that is connecting a water line by the Bank of America, and it went under Highway 210, under the railroad tracks, and connected with the existing system. And that has improved, now we have enough fire flow for Harris, and we have redundancy and greater water volume. They also recommended several improvements to the water treatment plant. One of the programs we are undergoing, our staff is undergoing, is a valve exercising program. This kinda began up on Vernon Road a few years ago, we had a water line break, in fact, we had several, but our very first water line break, we spent all night looking for the valves to shut off the water, and so that led to, we, we had a map, we knew where they were, but they were buried, and so we finally did, but to prevent that one from happening again, we started a water, or valve exercising program. And what that is, is we're kinda looking for trouble, because, but what it's, what first phase, what we're doing now, is we're locating the lines and the, the water valves, and if they're buried, we're elevating them to the surface, and we're also mapping them on our GIS water maps, so we will minimize and hopefully never have that problem again. Next year, hopefully, we're gonna be, start actually exercising or turning the valves to see which ones open, don't open, which ones, when we shut them, if they actually shut, a lot of times, that doesn't happen, and that's how we discover we have bad valves, and we replace them. In the meantime, I call it looking for trouble, because when you go to turn them on and off, sometimes you're gonna find they, they don't work, and you're right there, you've kinda got an emergency. But that's the way to do it, and we're committed to the project. It's gonna be a multi-year project, but it's, it's quite an improvement. So, the grade card for water treatment and distribution, water treatment is a C, and that is mainly because of our contaminated supplies, the source, but this upcoming project, the $14 million renovations, we ought to get close to an A after those are complete, as far as water treatment, maybe an A minus. Water distribution system, gotta C, and we look at it, and a lot of our water lines are old, but they're pretty average with other cities that are our age, and generally, cities don't go out and just start replacing lines because they're old, you wait until you have a series of breakages on a certain area, and then you might consider that. But there, we do have in the future, 3 million, we, the hydrology study that was done by Burns &amp; Mack during the 2007 Master Plan, called for line improvements or line replacements someday in the future, if there's a need for that. Any questions?
When, when you replace water lines, do you go back with a steel, or do you go with plastic?
We go back generally with ductile iron pipe, there are some new alternatives, but ductile iron pipe is what we use, and it's, it's better grade than it used to be.
When you replace water lines or what have you, does that, like if we have a break, like so let's say in a residential area, do we have a way to continue to get water to the residences, or are they out of water until the line gets replaced?
Yeah, we go from one valve, we shut off, we isolate it, so we go from one valve to the other valve, and whatever businesses or residents are in between are gonna be off for usually a short period of time.
Okay.
Depending on the size of the pipe. In residential areas, it should be three hours or so, and we try to notify the people, we also tell them to run their water, and these procedures you do after we repair them.
Okay, thank you.
In some industrial areas, we're talking, we try to do it at night to minimize disruption to the business, and sometimes it takes all night. Storm sewers, we have 41-mile storm sewer conveyance system. This is, our flat terrain in Public Works, we have less than 2% grade throughout the, all but up in the River Forest area. That's a challenge in many ways, it's a challenge for, but in storm, draining storm sewers, it's a challenge. For one reason, the grade of our storm sewer system is so minimal that it's, a normal city, they can put it at 4% grade and drains fine, so ours backs up, our sewage, I mean, our storm water backs up during flash floods, and throughout the years, we've done a lot to help that, but I don't think there's any way that that's gonna go away, so we have a higher risk of flash flooding. The good news is it usually resides soon, and there's usually rarely property damage. We have to clean, clean pipes regularly, we have the backer truck, and that's what we do, we clean pipes, every week, we, two or three days a week, we're out cleaning pipes and flushing them. The leaf program initially began to reduce the amount of leaves that get in storm sewers. It's great for the residents to do that, but that's, that's what initiated it. And we must pump our storm water into the river, when the river is up over our outflow pipes. So, those are the challenges of living in a really flat environment. We have six stormwater pump stations, the Levy District owns three, Rock Creek, Howell Street, and Burlington Pump Stations, the city owns three. The Levy Districts were built in the 50s with Corps of Engineers, built them, and then turned them over to the Levy District, and then the Levy District turned over maintenance to the city. In the 70s, the city built their, their three to supplement, and the three that the city builders, 26th Avenue, Lynn Jasper, and Atlantic Erie. The pumps on the pump stations the city built are much bigger and more efficient than the Levy Districts. Again, our agreement with the Levy District, we maintain them on a daily basis, we do the small repairs, but if there's something like a, one of theirs, if there's something like a pump that goes out, they step up and pay those capital expenses and repairs. So, grade card on storm sewers and flood prevention, the collection system is in good condition, all metal corrugated pipes that were lined with cure-in-place pipe years ago, so they're all plastic, we have no corrugated metal pipes out there rotting away. All six pump stations are tested and inspected by the Corps of Engineers annually. In addition, the Levy District engineers conduct inspections and provide reports, and each report has a list of maintenance items that our staff takes care of. Any questions?
On the, on the storm sewers, so you're saying that there's no better way to really collect that at all? Because I know I've had some concerns, this last year, we've had, what, three or four really heavy rains, where the water's made it at least halfway up to my house, and I know I've gotten some concerns from other neighbors where it's, it starts creeping up, and as you, talking, not much elevation change, as you watch it creep up, you're thinking, well, there's not much, you know, it doesn't have to get that much higher before it starts coming in. So is there no, so we clear out the catch basins we go through and?
Well, it's really important we keep the catch basins free of leaves, and the, and the lines cleared, and, you know, there was a big project years ago where they put a retention basin, build a retention basin on by the new Parson Rack building.
Yeah.
And that helped the North Gate area a lot, but it's, all we can do is keep them clean.
All right, thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah, we all have some pumps in my neighborhood, and they run when we have those big rains.
Nice to hear them run, too.
Yeah, I'd like to point out, it's not, we have the hillside levy, it's not a Corps of Engineers levy, it's, we used to call it a dyke, because it's not a true levy, but that takes in rainwater from all points north up to Vivian Road, and that keeps us from flooding, and it's conveyed over to Rock Creek, over, over by the hospital, but that's basically for stormwater flash flooding.
I noticed, we might have to, I don't know when the newsletter comes out, but one before the fall, a lot of people are, I don't know how you get word to them, because they're still putting out trash for Mondays, I mean, we send them personal letters and that, but the leaves, there's a lot of them still raking leaves into the street, and they go right to the drains. Even the high school that goes around and does it for free, and I don't wanna jump on them, but they raked them into the street on 24th when they came and did some yards for free, and I don't know if people's gonna learn, you know, if you do that, the day they come by and suck them up, there's no, no harm done, but, you know, when it, we get a heavy rain, and y'all go down to the catch basin, then the water can't go down the catch basins, you know, it's gonna start coming in the houses, and that's happened. I don't know how we get word to them, to not do that, but that's, you know, I see it all the time, you know, the leaves are raked to the street, so, anyway, we might try again.
We'll consider how to, how to get the word out better.
Yeah. There's a couple of things that probably people don't, most people don't know, but it's been a long-time policy not to grow oak trees because of acorns, and gum trees because of the big balls they release, and those are two measures we take. Sanitary sewers, in 1986, the city entered into an agreement with Kansas City for the treatment of our sewage. North Kansas City is one of 27 cities that rely on Kansas City to treat their sewage. The treatment plant was transformed into a pump station, and a force main was constructed, and we started pumping our sewage to, three miles to the east, to the Buckeye Pump Station, where it is pumped underneath the river to Kansas City's plant. It's a blessing that we were able to do that, because looking back, the odors were, you know, would be really disruptive to Harris, to Cerner's, and to the hospital, and you can't avoid that. So, on the other hand, the cost of our services from Kansas City is on the rise, and in 2010, EPA cited Kansas City for violations of the Clean Water Act, and they added a combined sewer system, their sanitary sewers combined with their storm sewer, lots of larger, older cities have that, and EPA is after all of them, and so they are really still in the beginning of what is a 25-year project, and they're in the engineering phase, and this, the investigation phase, they're going through and televising them, and they're doing some, they're starting some work, but it really, once construction starts, I am told that we will receive pretty healthy rate increases annually. A recent storm, a recent sewer rate study showed that something in the, close to 78% I think, of our expenses are in the WPC account are from payments to Kansas City, and that's going up. So in the future, whatever Kansas City increases each May, they send us our new increase, that's pretty much close to what North Kansas City customers are gonna get. That's pretty much close to what North Kansas City customers are going to get. Any questions about that? So knowing that every gallon of sewage we send to Kansas City, if we could reduce it, we're going to save money. And even back in 1988, the city started lining all of our sanitary sewer pipes. They're basically mainly clay pipes, and they're, clay pipes break, and they begin lining them. And in 2000, all 38 miles of sewer lines were lined, and it's basically like having a new PVC sewer system. In 2003, all 445 manholes were lined. And so we reduced the infiltration through to our sanitary sewer system and the amount of sewage that we sent to Kansas City significantly. In 2010, we've been waiting for underground technology to get better. And in 2010, we were about ready to go that direction, but it wasn't there yet. So we began replacing broken service laterals. That's where a service line comes into the main. We took responsibility for the private sewer system that's located within the city right away. And we started digging those after we, we also had videos first. We just, and we would find the break, the broken ones and fix them. The industry says that that's a very, one of the top places you get the groundwater infiltration. When it rained, it's very common for cities to get two or three times as much sewage into the plants than they do when it's not raining. Actually, most city treatment plants cannot handle that. They just, they can't really treat it. It just kind of overflows, and it's diluted, and it goes, ends up going into the river eventually. 2010 to present, we repaired over 160 sewer connections and 115 laterals using cure-in-place pipe. So the technology finally got where it would work for the city, and that's where we've used A's pipe cleaning. They go down, they video it, and they can actually repair sewer breaks with underground technology. Put in, it's amazing process they do, and, and it saves a lot of money, and you don't have to excavate it, especially if it's an alley or a street. We're going to continue, in the future, I hope, to take other measures to reduce infiltration. This is a graphic of volume reductions from 88 to 2016. It's something like 50% reduced from 2000, from 1988 till current. We've reduced this, the infiltration over 45%.
Is this-
Yes.
Storm sewer and sanitary sewer?
No, it's just sanitary sewer.
Just sanitary sewer. Do we send storm sewer?
We don't measure storm sewer.
Do we send that to Kansas City?
No.
To process? Okay.
We send it to the river.
Okay, okay. So we only get charged for the sanitary sewer to Kansas City?
But as Pat's pointing out, what you want to avoid is sending them storm water.
Yeah, exactly, yeah, this was great.
That it doesn't need to be treated, but because it's in the sanitary sewer pipe-
Yeah.
We pay to have it treated.
But our population has grown while this is decreasing based on these efforts, so that's great.
There's still a lot of animal waste flows into that thing, I know that for sure. When, you see tough stuff on the street all the time. People don't respect that ordinance that you need to clean up after your pet.
Yeah.
I don't know what you can do about that.
One thing that's interesting is Ingredion, which used to be National Starch. They, their sewage represents over, between 40 and 45% of all the sewage that we use.
Bill, to answer your question, I think in the, I think once or twice in the North Kansas City connection, we've had a little tidbit in there about picking up after your pets. Didn't we, Eric, at one time?
I believe we have, and we can do that-
And it might be something to put in yearly, just to-
Sure.
You know, over spring or whatever. I know when I use somebody else's yard, I always pick up after myself, so. You guys are supposed to laugh at that.
And he don't have a dog.
What are the spikes in here, like in 2010, do you, do you know what those are?
No one can figure out what that spike is. It's based on data, and what, there's an assumption that they didn't bill us for a couple of months or something, or they missed a month. But we could not figure out what the spike was. The expenditures for sewage treatment have gone up, but again, they would be nearly double had we not done anything. Without this, starting in 88, without lining the sewers, they would be double based on the volume back then.
Is there anything else we can do from this point on to lower the, continue to lower the volume?
Well, good question. I, we're, yes, there are, we're going to continue, you know, whatever we can do, we're going to continue. We're going to do some smoke testing and find out if there's still some cross connections, especially in the industrial area, where gutters used to go down into the sewers. They were never probably supposed to, but it was convenient. We're probably going to do that, because reducing infiltration is more, if it's needed, it's more important now than ever. So there's other things, we'll continue with the laterals to a certain extent, do whatever we can. So the grade card is B plus for our sanitary sewer system. It's in good shape, great shape. So conclusions are, overall, our infrastructure condition is above average. Investment for upgrades to the water treatment plant will greatly improve the city's water treatment rating. Continued investment, maintenance in the other areas of the infrastructure will allow for above-average conditions to continue. And continued commitment by the Special Road District to prioritize and address streets that need overlays will improve the grade of the street conditions. So we're, the city, bottom line is we're above average and getting better. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Good report, Pat, appreciate it.
Yeah, if you haven't had a chance to read through it, I think there is a lot of good information in there. It was good for us to, to work on putting it together and to make ourselves consider everything that's part of our system. And when I first saw these grades, I thought, that's, that's some pretty tough grading. But we'd rather be tough on ourselves and know where we feel like we need improvement than to give you an overly rosy picture. So, but I think that with continued work on some of the things that Pat talked about, we can, we can increase those, those grades that we've given ourselves in these different areas.
Yeah, when I first seen this, I was a little bit aggravated, thinking, you know, I think we're doing a hell of a good job. But, you know, I guess if you compare to other cities, then, you know, our streets are in great shape compared to a lot of our neighbor's cities. And so I guess that's why I got an inflated idea.
We were worried about what you think, sir, but we're, we're trying to be honest about it. And we, we do hope that at least, you know, doing this will help us and the road district to prioritize where we, where we put our efforts.
But it's all self-graded, correct? I mean, there's no outside firm that-
That is correct.
Grades for us, so.
That is correct. This is our first, first attempt at doing this kind of a comprehensive look at our system.
I mean, it wouldn't be a bad idea. I don't want to do this now, but it wouldn't be a bad idea at some point, maybe, to have a firm come in and give an objective view of our infrastructure, but.
Actually, the road district tried that here a number of years ago, and really, we couldn't find anybody that was, you know, that was-
Skilled at doing that?
That wouldn't do it, you know, I mean, and we just felt like it was going to be a kind of a waste of money. We could do it ourselves, just about as good, so.
I mean, the advantage is if you have somebody who's good at it and does it for multiple communities, then they have a perspective that we might not have.
Yeah, I agree, yeah.
But if you, if the company's not out there, then it's not out there. It's better to grade it ourselves and not grade it at all, so.
Yeah.
Great exercise.
Very good.
Thank you, Pat.
You know, one other thing I might say is that, and we all know that this is, we're down low, it's flat. And anytime that the river comes up, our water table comes up. And when you're trying to hold a road and you haven't got anything under it, it's just hard to do. So what we've got to work with, I think we're doing a pretty good job.
Motion to adjourn?
On the fair?
Aye.
A vote? Thank you, Pat.